Six thirty and a call to order the North Middlesex Regional High School School Committee meeting.
Where is it?
We are at the high school.
We just need to eventually talk louder so that's.
At six thirty, at six thirty, we're opening the meeting. We have members from Zoom that are on, that are. All right, and I will take a roll call. We have Will Hackler.
Here, present.
Patrick McPhillips.
Present.
Lisa Bloom.
Here.
June McNeil.
Here.
Randy Roche.
Here.
Do you want to say our other members or is it just members? Brad Morgan is here.
Yes, I am.
Dr. Reese is here. Nancy Hayes is here. Ryan Demar is here, our athletic director, and in the audience, we have Jeremy.
Hammond.
Hammond. Kevin Comer and Lisa.
Come on.
Come on. And I'm going to ask that we move Ryan Bailey back to the top of the agenda because he has to get back to the PCA for a comedy talent show. All right, Ryan, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ryan, senior here at the high school, and last year I did a civic action project about paper recycling. And the main mill I used was Mananok Paper Mills, trying to figure out a way to use something called closing recycling. I have a hard copy out for everybody. Essentially, what it is, is that if we give our paper to this mills, they'll recycle it and bring it back to us. So instead of us having to constantly cut down these trees, we'll be able to be using the same supply of paper, just refreshed and renewed. I tried emailing them when I did the project and during the summer, but unfortunately, they said they couldn't give me much information because I wasn't technically supported by the business that I was doing. So I've come in here to seeking permission to say that we are potentially interested. And if we don't make a decision yet, that's perfectly fine. I just want to know so I can start working with them, and if we don't approve it, we don't have to prove it in a day, but I just need to get the information from them for money and stuff. So if we do approve, I'll need some of the contact here about budget and papers and don't get anything wrong, and just get info and prices about our current paper supply. Secondary, if we don't want to quite do it yet, we could still set up, it's turning to quarter two soon. We want to set up maybe flexes and advisories where people throw away their paper in collection bins, since at the end of the quarter, people have a bunch of paper they don't need, and usually, you know, I always did a big like burnout at the end of the year with it, and I'm like, that's just a waste. So people can throw it in these, and we like to get that maybe started soon as we can experiment with ways. So I like to start an environmental club here that can work with that, that can sort through the paper and allow us to use this closer recycling. We would fundraise for collection bins. These big collection bins, we can do during advisory, and we like to get individual bins in most of the classrooms. And we're needed to fundraise and that the group can run. And we need a storage area. I know that there are some rooms that aren't fully used in the school right now. There are some side rooms, a science classroom that I know is vacant. We couldn't move it outside at all. We also need to figure that out. Data that I found is that we use seven tons of paper every year, and that's constantly every year that we're cutting down roughly 102 trees worth, which is a lot for a school, especially our size. So I'd like to do close loop to minimize that oil, water we use in our ecosystem. If anyone has any questions, I think the main thing I have, you don't have to make a vote on it yet, just look on this and see if I can get approval to start contacting Mananok Paper Mills to see if they'll be interested in doing it with us and possibly start getting a collection service going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the committee have any questions at this time?
So in order to start getting a cost for any of this, they just need approval to be able to start working with us? There's no monetary.
No.
Anything we need to commit to?
Yeah, no, it's non-binding. I said, when I emailed them, they said, sorry, we understand that you're a student and we're not sure if your school, they don't want to waste time essentially.
Right.
So if I say, oh, this school has good on my back, they may be able to give me prices and stuff. But no, goodbye.
Okay, how did you come about this closed loop?
So I actually worked in the departmental service learning, went down, and they actually had a mill for that down there for almost the whole city, which is very impressive. And I thought that anything in New England that does that, and I found that Mananok is the closest for paper. There's one, I think, 30 minutes away in Massachusetts that is cardboard. Everyone extended that, but Starwood's is paper and Mananok Mills is a great producer of that recycling that a lot of businesses around here use. So I think it'd be cool to put our school into that and start making that progress forward.
Were they able to give you any schools or businesses that are already using their services?
I can't remember the name of the businesses. I didn't find any schools yet, but they would consider us as a business per se, but still, we can do it since we're a school.
And he had a great presentation at the Civic Action Day, and so, and he talked to me about it, and it was quite interesting. So anyone else have any questions?
It seems like a great project. We need to study market research. Could we move it over now just to let him press? I mean, it's.
It's up to the committee. And you guys are good with it? We can move to vote. All right.
I'd be happy to work with you at the high school as well, just to be.
This is just at the high school you're doing?
Yes, it's the high.
All right. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I move to give the schools permission to look into the feasibility for the full circle or the closed loop recycling program.
Excellent. Thank you. Would I request where else I have approval to maybe start working with something for advisory? We don't want to do that quite yet.
Mr. Morgan said he would help you figure out who to get in contact with and different things. And will you come back and present to us again?
I will.
So I'm going to take everyone in favor. Vote.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained?
Who's got them?
Patrick. All right, Ryan, we have the people.
Thank you very much. Actually, I had to head out, but thank you for the special thanks.
Do they get your? All right. Now, we're going to move back to the consent agenda. You can take a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
What was that? In second, June? All those in favor? Hi. Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Any public communications? I didn't see any. I didn't see any. All right. Now we are on to Meredith. But I'm gonna, Meredith was mentioned in an article in the Sun Bowl, Bowl of Sun, about her outstanding field hockey career and as a top student. So, and sent out the article to everyone. Did everyone have a chance to look at it? Or it was in a public communication? So congratulations, Nancy. All right, now that I've shown the spot, you can go ahead and rest of the student report.
So Natalie, do you understand?
Oh, and this is Nat.
Natalie.
Natalie?
Okay, so we had homecoming September 28th, that was brand smoothly, it was a big success. And this week, this week council is also starting to sell Halloween kindergarten, which is compared to Canadian that funds will go towards student council as well as Spirit Week, first upcoming week for Halloween. We're also starting to plan for Veterans' Day in the faculty chair, and so we need to be together and look forward to that. The Veterans' Day celebration is November 7th, and school committee members are welcome.
What time is the Veterans' Day program at?
Usually, it's normally in the morning.
And I think everyone's got an invitation on it, in fact.
And then we have the Power Book game upcoming November 19th, five to eight p.m., and it's getting grade versus grade. So it's freshman versus sophomores, and then junior versus seniors, and the winners are those two games against each other, and that's usually a big fun event.
And that's November 19th?
Yes. As for other things in the school, NHS induction starts two weeks ago, and we're always looking for more service opportunities. And as we start to get going, our individual service groups are being in their projects, which is, this is just like little groups of students in NHS who are going to do service projects around the school. For sports, and as our fall season is winding down, many teams are heading into tournament season, which I know we're all very excited for. But there's also a lot of other things that we're on winter sports, I know the promise of like that's going to attract, and we're all very excited to plan to start. And just other news, ROKA, ROKA of National Arts Society have their inductions, as well as the Triam National Music Arts Society.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for the representatives? Thank you, Natalie and Meredith. If you guys want to go, you are free to go and do your homework. Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
All right. My report. Just some bookkeeping. There's some queries that need to be completed, and then if everyone would, when the meeting is sent out, just acknowledge that you got it, or if you're coming or not declining. In fact, I think that is all on that. And then superintendent's report.
I don't have anything until we get in the board.
All right. And then you are up, Mr. Demar.
Perfect. So I just wanted to come to the school committee to request approval for the North Middlesex Regional High School baseball team to do an overnight trip to Mashpee for, it's March, in March, Friday, March 28th through Sunday, March 30th. They go down there, they've done another done in the past, they play a couple of scrimmages, it's a little less than two weeks into the season. It is something that they've already started fundraising for, and it's, you know, a situation where it's, it's not only the opportunity to scrimmage some teams from different parts of the state, but it's also an opportunity for them to do some team bonding. It's something that Coach Borogard has, I mean, he's done. Now, I know at least for two years, the legwork for all of this, and he handles the logistics, and he, I know he invited, at least in the packet, had, he offered both the itinerary kind of day to day, but then also some of the, you know, some of the pertinent information, hotel location, the funding, those types of things. He's, with that, I know there's a fee in there that talks about like $300 a player. He's provided, I would say, at least four different fundraising opportunities for families as ways to cut into that amount. So it's not necessarily a burden in terms of for families, because it's something that he's discussed with them all along. He's also already got the process going with the nurses. He's given them kind of a list of prospective students or players, so that it is obviously a wide list, because they don't try it until March, but he wanted to give them plenty of time to get ahead of that. He has submitted the out of state overnight field trip form request as well, that has been looked at by the interim principal here at the high school. And has, like I said, moved on to the nurse. And even, you know, he kind of goes into the medical piece of it. He traditionally has a parent there that is either has a nurse or a doctor background, and they are one of the few teams, I would say, in Massachusetts that have their own AED that they travel with. It's something they, they bought early on in Coach Borogard's tenure here, and they bring in practice games everywhere, so they are well equipped in case of any medical situations there. I also know that he meets with his coaches and chaperones prior to this trip. And goes over kind of the procedures for different scenarios, just again, so those, that those medical concerns are kind of, at least the anxiety that may come from those are kind of swashed prior to heading, and they have an upper plan for all those different situations.
Anyone have any questions for Ryan? Mr. Demar?
Looks like you've covered everything.
I will take a motion now for the trip.
I move the school committee approve the North Middlesex Regional High School baseball team's overnight trip to K-Cod, pretty familiar scrimmage dance in March 28, 2025, and March 30, 2025.
Second. And, you know, will anyone have a question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That's got to be, it's all approved, Ryan.
Thank you.
We are on to the homeschool report. As the athletics tiered sponsor form has been removed from the agenda, and the Washington DC trip is removed as well. Okay, I think you're up for the next three.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As we do each year, I just submit the report, annual report, to notify the committee of the number of families and number of students that are enrolled for a homeschool program. So each year, families have to submit a new application to identify what their curriculum is and their means of assessing their children through the homeschool program. We're continuing to see a decline in the number of families from, we spiked in 20, the 2021 school year to 215 students, and that was kind of post-COVID or mid-COVID, so we're continuing to see a decline. I don't anticipate, we're not back to the pre-COVID numbers yet. I really don't anticipate that we'll ever get back to that level, because I think some families who had the opportunity to explore homeschooling when we were in a pandemic period have actually found that that was a more beneficial opportunity for their children to learn, so they've maintained that. But we are continuing to see a decline. It represents now only 4.55% of our students, overall student population, and it's a decrease from last year of 8.28% in the number of students that are doing homeschool programs.
What age groups predominantly are being homeschooled this time?
It's really mixed, so the report, you know, we see between like 10 to 15 students anywhere for each grade level from grade one up to grade 10. When we get into grade 11 and 12, it's down to about five students in each grade level, and kindergarten, we do have five students, which we don't, kindergarten's not required for families to submit a plan unless their child is turning six prior to January 1st of the year that they would have been in kindergarten, because kindergarten is not a required attendance program.
And do we find that there's an increase, decrease, or about the same of parents actually asking to be in a particular class, like at the high school for a lab class or for supplement?
No, we don't really see a lot of that. I see more of it in terms of families that want to explore or participate in extracurricular activities such as athletics, or even, we had one family last year, or at the beginning of this year, that wanted to make sure that their child could still participate in things like school dances. And as long as they work through the high school administration, they're still able to attend those programs, and as long as they also comply with rules and expectations.
Any more questions? I'm going to do a question on the Beltman plane.
So just another quick update. So this year, we have four early release, late start PD days. And what we decided to do for this year was have our staff at the elementary, middle, and high school level go through a rotation for three of those days, where one day they would be receiving professional development focused in special education topics, and that's going to be led by our Director of Special Education, Perrin Upton. We're going, Massachusetts is implementing a new IEP, Individualized Education Program this year, and that's work that our special education staff need to be aware of, but this also impacts for how it looks and how our regular education teachers need, what their understanding of their process needs to be. So that's going to be one area of focus. The second area of focus is around our multilingual learners. And last year, we had an outside consulting from Mountaintop Consulting, work with our multilingual teachers. They felt, they were, had very positive feedback, and so we're bringing her back to do whole staff training, really around strategies and supports for students as they're training, as they're working within the general education setting, to make sure they were meeting the needs, better meeting the needs of all students. And the third area that we're providing PD on those days for is around restorative justice, restorative practices. And restorative practices is really, a lot of times when people think of it, they think just around the discipline piece and making sure that the discipline when a child behaves in a certain way that we wouldn't like, that they then are restoring their, the sense of community to whatever they've done. So if it's something in the cafeteria, what can they do to then restore their ability to be in the cafeteria and not interfere with other kids? Access to enjoying lunch or things like that. But it really, at the base level, restorative practices is really about how do we create a caring and safe community that all students understand that and then want to be complying with rules and expectations, because if a child doesn't have that sense of belonging in their classroom, and then we're asking them to restore themselves within a behavior in the classroom, there's no incentive for them to do that, because they don't care about that connection. So restorative practices at the base level is first just starting with how do we create that sense of belonging and community that all students feel respected, feel safe, and want to be part of the community. And so we're working with Suffolk University's Center for Restorative Justice, and they're going to be providing an overview this year. And my hope is that it'll be very well received by staff, and then we'll continue a model with them into subsequent school years where they provide more specific training on implementing it and working with small groups of teachers, so that we can start to do some pockets of growing in the practice. So this really will just be an overview during a two-hour process. And the other thing I just wanted to highlight in terms of professional development, we do have our upcoming November 5th PD day, and we are collaborating with Lunenburg Public Schools for this PD. This is a great opportunity for us to save some money, to share some of our resources and expertise. We have a keynote speaker, Dr. Erin Nerdino, who's really, has done some work. She was a former teacher at King Philip Regional School District. And while she was there, she did work with students around interrupting harassment speech. How do you interrupt? How do you do it in a safe way when you see something happening, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a student? How do you, how do you intervene, but intervene safely? And so there was a structured program she was doing there at King Philip. She's now, I forget what college she's at, but she's now a college professor, and she's continuing that work with, at the college level of how do we provide support. So she's going to be our keynote for all staff to hear, then she'll be doing some breakout sessions. All staff are going to have the opportunity, after they see the keynote, to self-select between a variety. We have probably about 40 to 50 different sessions that will run over three session blocks, so teachers will be able to self-select a topic that's most of interest to them. All of the topics are focused around the concept of caring, safe, inclusive environments. So we're excited about doing it. I know we did this work with Lunenburg. I don't know if it was pre-COVID or right during COVID, of kind of sharing our PD work together, and we're looking forward to doing that again. And it'll be hosted here at the high school.
And you said that's November 5th?
That's our November 5th.
Any questions for Dr. Reese? All right. On to MCAS.
So I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Comer, who has really been digging into the data. And what I will say is, you'll see, and we'll try to keep it as concise as possible, I know there's a lot we can talk about, but it's not only a focus on our MCAS data, but it's also what are the other aspects of data that we're collecting? Because MCAS is only one source of information for one period, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to look at all of the sources of data we have to make sure we're making effective progress for students and also making good education decisions. So thanks, Dr. Comer.
Thank you, Dr. Reese. And so in a little bit of change in the past, I'm actually not going to hit you with a lot of numbers. I've linked everything, the relevant data, so you can see the charts and tables if you're into that sort of thing, but I really took the time to dig into like, what's the story that this data is telling us? And how is that going to affect, you know, the instructional practices and the priorities that we had before? All right, so the first thing is there's a district-wide accountability percentile. We're to be sitting within the state. We've seen this from year to year. This is only just to kind of show you that this is what the state rankings were. The state is pretty flat and slightly flat overall. So I'm going to try and situate us as in relation to statewide data as well, to show where we're sitting, where we're outperforming, where our sort of focus needs to be in order to kind of breeze on the block. But you see, like, last year, there were 82% of schools that were not requiring assistance. This year, it's down to, it's, down to 83 last year. Same with the progress, slightly down. Last year, there were 66 schools that received the school recognition award, but they're, they're in this area, there's only 50 this year. So you can see that already is a little bit of a drop in statewide performance, and that's going to be pretty normal on the way. What matters is, again, I'm not going to go through all this. The indicators, Hydralink will give you all the percentages and the weights and everything that goes into it, but these are what goes into the accountability system currently. So it does talk about MCAS, but it also talks about things like chronic absenteeism in the high school level, the ability to access advanced coursework, and then things like graduation rate, dropout rate, and everything has a weight that comes in, and then they rank you either as a non-high school or high. So the high schools are only compared to high schools, the non-high schools are only compared to non-high schools. So you can't compare them to each other. This year, none of our schools are targeting for any sort of assistance, and so I bolded Hawthorne, because last year Hawthorne did have a finding around one group of our eighth grade students who did not, not enough of them took the MCAS. So we had a plan to make sure that was, that was addressed. It's one of those things where it's a subgroup that does not have a lot of students, so every individual student counts more towards a percentage. So we actually didn't have to do a lot of work. We just had to kind of be vigilant, take a look at it, and it kind of worked itself out, but we did what we needed to do without mistakes on that. So here's where we get into our percentiles. I'm going to talk a little bit about these. So the elementary, again, we're about middle of the patch, give or take a little bit. Middle schools are a little bit low, but we'll talk about that a little bit. The high school is at the 43rd percentile. So again, somewhere near the middle. Forty to 60 is basically the middle, so you think of it as a bell curve. So here in the 40 to 60, you're typical. So we're not grossly underperforming, we're not grossly overperforming. We're, we're about typical for the state. But what it comes down to is that, so the takeaway is probably was that, first of all, achievement in high school exceeded everything we did in 2023, so we made some growth there, which is good. Especially among students with disabilities, and that's something that we went into the year knowing was an issue that we needed to address. And so with civic work with some schools and with some departments, and we did make some really good gains there, so that was good. The attendance is the biggest thing that we have to struggle with. We were, it was low scores on the accountability. The buildings, particularly Pepperell, got zero out of four points for their chronic absenteeism, but we just had way too high of a rate of absent students in almost all of our schools, but particularly in our household schools. So because of the way the waiting system works, like it dropped scores significantly, but it's one of the things that needs to be fixed. If you get kids to school on a more regular basis, those scores come up very quickly. So it's not so much about the, you know, the performance or the instruction and things like, it's really about getting kids in the building, and from there, everything sort of rolls on. And then the other thing that's a little troubling is that the achievements score are based on growth score. We really do focus more on growth, because that's where it, again, relates to how other students are doing. Achievement scores will fall and rise from year to year depending on how our test was or different things, but growth is, is a constant measure, and we want that growth to be like, as someone who's into the data, like I look at growth way more than I look at achievement, because that's hell of a money normal story. But it is only one year. It's not a trend, but it is something that's kind of take note of. If this happens again, if it happens again, then that might be something that interests us. I don't, oh, yes.
How do they define a fault of the accident?
If you miss 10% or more this year, so 18 is.
And, and that's absent, like excused or unexcused.
And before March 1st. They're comparing to March 1st data from COVID. So for the last year, four years, they're going year to year, but they're stopping at March 1st. So we have, I think we're 13.6% of our students have missed at least 10% of the school year prior to March 1st. So, so this is data from the state. We just got this a couple of weeks ago, where they reported out that the achievements gap between where they reported out that the achievements gap between students who are chronically absent and not chronically absent has a significant statistical difference. So you see, in grade ten, twenty-seven percentage points lower, less likely to reach your meter exceeding on MCAS if you weren't here. Which makes sense. If you're not here for the instruction, you're not willing to do so long a test, right? But I did reach out to Desi. I have a pretty good relationship with their chief data person. The platform we use to get our own data does not have this built in at the district level yet. So it don't have our scores for the discrepancies, but they're working on that because people have been asking about it. It's just not available because it's an outside vendor that creates the platform. But it is, as you see, these are pretty striking numbers, and given where we are, we're probably in this trend. And the other thing too, there was a, FiftyCan did a study about, from state to state, about strengths and weaknesses relative to what parents and families thought. Massachusetts, as you can expect, probably, we did very well. We did, we were above the national average in thirteen of the fifteen areas. These are the two that we weren't as a state. Again, it's not district-wide, but if you're thinking about what are we doing to prepare our students? The only places that we seem to be falling short is our confidence in post-secondary. So when we think about what we do in our high school, are we preparing our students? I mean, I don't know what our district data is, but as a state, it's not our strongest. We're good in everything else. But this is something that as we think about what we're telling our tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders, it helps to prepare them, to be mindful that it may need some support, maybe some. So it comes to reserve learning results, right? So how do we measure it? We have the ELA, math and science, MCAS exams. Grade eight civics, we'll have an MCAS exam starting this year. And something that I feel like I need to point out because I've asked some questions about this, I know there's a ballot question. Regardless of how that vote turns out, MCAS will continue this year and for the foreseeable future. It is a federal mandate and in-state law. So people are going to think they're voting to get rid of MCAS, and they're going to be surprised when their kids are still taking in the spring. Your kids are still taking in the spring regardless of this. So, so some people have said, well, the MCAS data doesn't matter because it's not going to be erect. It's going to be erect. So, and I've linked in all the relevant information for that. So just wanted to correct some of the misinformation that we've been hearing. We also have our internal assessments already, which will be used for our early literacy K-3. We have a platform, iXL, which takes care of the rest of the four to eight grades for ELA and then all of one through eight in math. We don't do the kindergarteners yet. We're trying to find a different version that's more kindergarten-friendly, but we don't have any. So ELA, let's go through this really quickly because you have all the numbers. The growth scores, again, forty to sixty is the good range. That's your typical growth. As you see, school-wide, each of our schools have fallen within the expected range. So our kids are on track, ELA, every school, every grade level. So we're doing all right. Internally, this has been the really interesting thing for us to see because this is a change that our friend is the retention level of the students. And by not, or we keep in the back, but what are they retaining over the summer? So at the end of last year, seventy-seven percent of our grade three to seven students fell at or just below grade level. And we still count just below because of COVID. Seventy-three percent began the year at or below grade level, or just below grade level, which means only about four percent really had them slide over the summer. It's been much worse in the past. So our kids are remembering stuff over the summer. That's a good thing. That helps us out. That helps teachers out in September and October. They're not reteaching as much, or they shouldn't have to reteach as much as they may have been used to doing in the past. The same thing, I read, this is a different thing. Ninety-eight percent went down to ninety-one percent. So ninety-one percent of kids coming in day one, ready to learn at the grade level they're supposed to. That's a big number. That's a good number. So our early literacy is starting to turn around. We have the curriculum, foundational skills programming for the kids. It's, the data says that that's worth it. So takeaways, again, we're a little bit lower overall than the state, but it's, the state was low, declined in every grade, three through eight, and then when it came to MCAS. So we did, but everybody did. But the second one is the one, again, the gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities closed specifically with nonfiction topics. And that's been a struggle we've had for years about getting kids better with nonfiction. Our kids have always been strong with fiction. Kids have not been strong with nonfiction. We're getting there, especially with students with disabilities. Grade ten students, the MSU's outperforming the state twenty-seven of the thirty-four items, and we're statistically standing five others. That's great stuff. And then we pulled more kids out than not meeting expectations at the lowest level of scoring in MCAS, which is good. We're raising the floor of where our kids are. So all these things are really, really. So we just need to support our multilingual learners a little bit better. That just comes with more training or exposure. This PD day that they're going to get is going to be a big step towards that. We just haven't had the population for, for our teachers to get those reps in and learn how to do this work. They'll get there. We just need to provide them that support. The skill block assessment, that's for the early literacy. We've been working, Lisa and I, this year to really strengthen those, strengthen the data around those, get that back to the teachers so they can make their instructional decisions. And then just, again, the choosing resources, right? Some of the same books that I learned about in high school are still being taught. I'm turning fifty next week. Like, that shouldn't happen. Like, we should be having new books come in. Like, stuff's been written. It's cool. It's good. Like, the teacher's saying lessons and values and themes with, you know, newer material level engagements. So we're working towards that. Math, same thing. The growth scores were almost all within the range. It's only was thirty-nine, it's right outside. It's around here. It's basically there. So we're right on track of those. This is with a newer math trick. Most teachers have just finished their second year with it. Few teachers with their third year. But this is really good to be back in the typical range two years into an implementation. You don't see that very often. Our internal data, this is, this is the thing that's going to haunt us for a couple of more years. It is nothing that anybody's been able to figure out what to do about it. I broke down grade levels by which kids have not had any COVID interruption to those who have, right? So our grade three students last year started post-COVID. So they didn't have, they've gotten the appropriate grade level education they should have gotten so far. Ninety-seven percent of them were at a grade level. Grade four, the ones where they had the last class to have twenty-twenty and they're disrupted, also ninety-seven percent. So they're recovering. They didn't lose as much. They lost some kindergarten, but that's more easily made up with the way grades one and two are structured. But you're starting to see the drop as the kids who missed half a year of foundational skills. It's compounding over time. And I'm in a lot of like group discussions about what to do, and no one has this answer. Everything, everyone's tried. It's not seemed to be working. So again, we're not alone. We just don't have a, we don't have an answer yet. But we're trying to just do the best we can. But this is something that until that class of kids cycles out, it's going to be a few more years, it's going to keep showing up. And so as long as we understand that and might, and take that into consideration when we've talked about it. Again, it's, we acknowledge it. We do the best we can with it, but it's, it's going to be really hard to completely reverse that trend. Again, we may engage in grades three through five. Again, our elementary, they're taking on this new program. They're doing really well. Same only increase in grade three. They were down in every other grade. So that was, that was a good thing to. The second one is the one I like the most because it's the quality of the questions that the students were answering. As I went through over the summer, the item analysis data, our students are doing much better than the state in questions that are like at second level that make you think. The interpret questions, like the patterning, like those sorts of things that are a little bit more higher level. Our kids are actually doing really well with this. They're struggling, quote-unquote, with like the worksheet questions. It's like, okay, but we can fix that, or you know, there's reference sheets for that, or Google will help them with that. But the thinking questions, they're actually doing pretty well. And that's an encouraging sign. That speaks to the way the teachers are engaging with this degree. The students with disabilities in the high school doubled. You know, Paul Thompson and I worked on this beginning last year. This was something that we specifically talked about as being the focus. He crushed it with the stat. Went from nine percent combined between meeting and exceeding to nineteen, right? And the state is still at like twelve. So the high school did a really, really good job of those grades ten. Spent student disabilities last year. Definitely wanted to shout that out. And again, we also had fewer students in the not meeting expectations. So we're pulling up that. Let's take this, that's again, the multilingual learners. He's hitting that data with the more driving structure, and then that consistency of experience as they progress in the grade levels. Making sure that every teacher gets kids in front of them who have done the same thing the year before. Again, that's, that's come. Side data, just quickly, five and ten saw an increase, eight to five, that's the state. Again, improvements with student disabilities. And grade ten scored above standard in all, all five subgroups. We don't have a high enough population for a couple of them, but everyone we did have enough, we were better than the state. AP exam data, just, this is quick, interesting, and I like this. The increase in participation was up thirty percent. The number of tests up forty-six percent. The number of tests scoring to be higher fell, but it is, I believe, a sign that more students felt safe to take the test and take that risk. And that's what we want out of our kids, right? And that's why I keep thinking into the data that second level is important. Like, there's an easy growth rate that just went down five. So that's something wrong. I don't think so. I think it went up five because kids wanted to take that test.
What a spring.
Race pathway then. So that, if you pass the AP test with a three or more, you potentially.
What range?
Uh, one-six, sorry. Yeah. You potentially don't have to take that class as top in college, children. There's, but. In many communities, there's sort of a need even to, it's like, don't take the test unless you can pass it. And there's a lot of anxiety that's attached to that. Here, it seems like more students were encouraged to take this test, give your best, see what happens. I love that. That's the kind of attitude we want these students have.
Doesn't that cost you money?
It does. How much does that cost?
But if they pass it, you don't.
How much does it cost me? I ask a question.
It depends on a hundred dollars.
Eighty bucks or something.
Yeah.
But again, if they pass it, many, there are many colleges that will accept that in lieu of a course, a college course, which we all know.
Just to great spend it.
Yeah, I do think that there does need to be some work around with the surprise media. And so then honestly, this in, so look at the elementary school, those schools, high school, each identified where their strengths and supports were and what areas they were going to be targeting for this year. So that's, I will review the whole thing. But a lot of it is about sort of the training and the collaboration time between teachers, the modeling of effective practices, and paying attention to what groups are in need of more support and how do we provide that.
That is it.
Any questions?
You'll be asked.
What?
You'll be asked more questions.
You can ask the question if you want.
Eric, no.
I guess I'll address my other questions, thank you, Eric.
I just wanted to come and say thank you for bringing me on the iXL and the iReady that you gave us that workshop on and bringing that into this data. Thank you.
Awesome. To me, that's a better indication of how our kids are doing because it more ties to what they're doing every day than, you know, something that happens over the years, not done yet.
Yeah, but it's still something that the school committee never had sighted to. So thank you.
I know my kids come home and they tell me they were on iReady or iXL, so they are good tools. Right. Anyone else have more questions or? Onto the FY twenty-four final general fund expense report in excess and deficiency, Nancy.
Please. May I? I'll be, I'll be quick, but I did want to provide the full committee with last year's activity for the budget, including the certification of the excess and deficiency, which has happened. Actually, it happened pretty early for us. Normally, we get that sometime in January, February, after the tax rates are set. We did get certified at one million eight seventy-two, two twenty-six. This is about eight hundred thousand less than last year's certification. The E and D number is made up of the activity of the general fund year over year. So it's made up of expenditures in excess of what was budgeted or in revenues in excess of what was budgeted. So this year of that one million, and also we carry forward. If we had any E and D from the prior year, that would be added to it. As we know, this, that didn't happen this past year. We did use the full E and D last year. It wasn't worth the budget, so that gets reduced, that was reduced out of the number that we certified this year. So we have revenues coming in about six hundred and twenty thousand over what we expected. The majority of that came as investment income. And I think that has to do with some of the ways that the funding was, the accounts that were set up. Our treasurer, Michael Hartnett, moved some things around this past couple of years, and that's increased the investment income significantly. We did get a return of funds from the Valley Collaborative of rate around a hundred and fifty thousand last year. So that's part of that six hundred and twenty. And then a little bit more in the Medicaid reimbursement, almost seventy thousand more than we were anticipating. So that, the excess of the expenditures and the revenues over is what made up the million eight. So you have that in the packet, the details to look at if you'd like. You can take note that one of the things that's on that expenditure report is, is an expense column, but then there's also an encumbrance column. And the formula is a little funky as far as how it calculates that because you're actually kind of closing out prior year's encumbrance and adding the new encumbrances. So it sometimes doesn't look like you think it should look, but it's a little more complicated of a formula. The state did certify the number earlier, as mentioned. The Department of Revenue does that and goes through the whole, the whole financial statement. It isn't, we've had our audit. The audit isn't complete yet, but it's almost there. So I just wanted to update you on last year's activity. If there's any questions about it for this year.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Nancy. Sure. All right, onto the crosswalk. Mr., our superintendent, Morgan.
Yes, so this crosswalk memorandum is something that has been drawn up by our legal counsel and was also done, this was a project that was done in collaboration with the town of Pepperell, where we had two blind spots entering both the Nissintisit and the Barnetbrook Elementary School. We had received several complaints to something that I brought to the committee back three, maybe four years ago at this point. And it took engineering and the project to this point to be completed. So again, just coming back and asking that Ms. Martin, as the chair, had the ability to to sign off on that memorandum of agreement.
And the money was already approved.
It's a, we did transfer funds that year, I want to say twenty eighteen, maybe, or nineteen to cover the crosswalk work. And that work happened, and Pepper provided a breakdown as best they could. They, they did, they were the lead as far as bidding the project, and they included everything that they were working on. And some parts could be pulled out and some parts couldn't be. So they provided the letter that you'll see. I think it's like at the second page of that letter, that's the breakdown. And we looked at that and came to the conclusion, to use the number that's in the MOU right now, which is the two, I'm sorry, two fifty-nine, nine eighty-one to reimburse Pepper. And we would be working on that if the committee approves the MO. The M O R A, we will go forward and work on getting that reimbursed to the town of Pepper.
And this did pass through the finance, and we did discuss it.
Just out of curiosity, how much did we put away in twenty eighteen or whenever we had originally put money away? Does this cover, does that cover everything?
It does. Yeah. We had three hundred thousand, I think we transferred out at the year that we did that. We've done a few things. We paid actually for the design of the crosswalk areas. We did the contract with that engineer. They did the design work and then provided that to the town, and the town did the bidding. And they added to it obviously the other things. So it was included in a larger project that the town did. But yeah, there's more, there's plenty to cover that with that.
Can I take a motion?
I move the school committee vote to designate Lisa Martin as chairperson to execute the crosswalk memorandum of agreement with the town of Pepper. Second.
That was you. And Patrick? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Right, MCAS. Moving on to the MAS, M A S C delegate selection. Is there anyone wanting to go? To the conference down at Kipod? Anyone? Not everyone jumped up? All right. I see no one. All right. M A S C resolutions. Anyone want to discuss any of them? They are all on here, but we don't have to discuss them. If somebody wants to discuss one, we can discuss it or we can pass on them. No one wants to do the resolution?
If we're not, so instead of delegate, I don't think we really need to vote on it. They don't really discuss.
Okay. All right, now we are on to the order business of the district strategic plan and Dr. Reeves.
Thank you very much. Um, so earlier this year, we shared out the draft, uh, strategic plan. Um, as I identified at that time, there were three areas, three buckets that we were looking at. Curriculum and instruction, meeting the needs of all learners or all students, and climate, culture, and community. Um, after we shared out that draft with you, the leadership team did do some tweaking in terms of just the formatting of the document. Um, so the first two pages are really the overview of what we're looking at over the the two years. And then it goes into, um, the next three pages are the major milestones. So what you see listed there is under each category, what do we anticipate will be the my, the major actions or major outcomes that you'll see as a result of the work in that area? Along with identifying the specific year that that milestone will be embedded as regular practice. That doesn't mean the work ends at that point in the year. The work will continue, but it'll be something that we anticipate will be, uh, embedded practice that will be in place and sustained, um, moving forward. Um, going on to page six, I, we did break it down, um, pages six and seven by school year. So you could see kind of what it looks like from a school year perspective. And there's also a link on the top of page six, um, to a more detailed document that breaks down each of the actions, each of the milestones, and shows all the little, the substeps that go under them. Um, we didn't want to get to that granular level on this core document, but we certainly wanted to provide the link so that people could see the type of work that goes under there. Um, so at this point, the the administration is really comfortable with, um, these actions and moving forward. We, um, would seek the committee's approval of, um, the strategic plan. And if it moves forward, one of the goals we have is in this fall, in the fall, doing a family community evening where we, um, walk through the strategic plan in a little bit more detail. And we talk about the data sources that we use to identify these areas as areas of need and also get input and feedback from families in the community about what other sources of data or what other concerns or things that they want to, um, make sure we're addressing within those core topic areas.
Is that visible?
Yes. Wanted to wait until we had the plan formally approved and then, and then send something.
Does anybody have any questions in the strategic plan? Then I will take a motion from somebody to approve the district strategic plan.
I move to approve, uh, the the district strategic plan as presented.
Second. That is Randy NG. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
I would abstain. I haven't been through the whole thing, so. Sorry.
That's okay. All right, we are on to the subcommittee reports. Julie McNeer with the Ashby Elementary Building.
Um, we just received the electroeducation study that was grant funded. Um, and that was just presented to us in our last meeting. So that is available if anybody needs without it. Um, you will probably get it on the site too. We're trying to get all the studies and everything on the new site. So Julie's been taking care of that.
All right. Acceleration repairs. I know that you were trying to reach representative and to close out those projects. That's all we did there. Um, finance, we are going.
So, uh, the first item on our agenda is that the finance committee is recommending, uh, there will be a point, and I'm going to mess up her name, so I apologize. Kathy, the winner, Laris, as the leading community representative to the finance committee for this year. Second.
That was Will and Patrick. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now we are moving on to the FY 26 budget. So Will is going to take over and.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Morgan and I have been meeting with the town administrators, uh, going over some of these, the basics of the budget coming up to the 26. So, um, we want to weigh out a few items here, uh, for the. Right now. Of course. There's 1.5 budget. Roughly 66 million dollars. Okay. I gotta research these by mistake. All right, um, as many of you know, uh, because I believe you guys all saw it, the letters from the three, uh, town administrators that they signed, they requested, uh, to us roughly, you know, three percent that they had handled a three percent increase from 25 to 26. Yes. From what, yeah, okay. So, um, in order for us to get to this, you know, three percent. So, well, back up a step here. The towns are roughly 60%, uh, 60% of our total budget. The remaining 40 comes from the states. Okay? So basic math here. 60% of our budget is coming from the towns. That obviously comes out to, uh, 1.8% increase year over year for the budget pieces. As we know, as we've been told and we've seen historically, you know, the state piece of it, think we have predicted that's, I mean, the zero, um, just, you know, round numbers for it. I know there's a little bit of an increase. Um, but it's always been, you know, low, under, you know, certainly under a percent to it. Uh, Nancy, we have like, your estimate's like three tenths of a percent.
Uh, right now, we're anticipating, um, 60 dollars a student and, uh, reduction in the transportation um, due to, um, going down to 78%. It's unclear when those will be yet till the state sets their budget, but those are the numbers, which is 0.31% increase. One state number.
So 1.8% of 66 million dollars, and I've done that somewhere. Someone's got calculator.
1.8% is 1,188, are we looking for the total?
1.2 is what I close.
Yeah, so an increase of, uh, one, uh, 1.2 million.
All right. So, uh, let's see. What we already have reported here for today, when we talk about E and D, you know, as we go to fiscal year 26. First, you know, the first change that we have could have, well, yes, increase, increase of 800,000. 800,000 on the E and D because we used 2.6 last year. There's only 1.8. So just from that E and D portion of it, we're going up 800,000 of what we had last year in the budget. Also due to, which I don't know how much we did this last time, but right now, due to, you know, increasing the special ed costs from move-ins, from the, you know, language learners, you know, things like that. The already projected increase over last year is about a million. And do special ed, that were. Okay. The other projection that we, you know, for projecting piece of it, about a half million dollars in the increase of insurance costs. And since we're standing in the building here, let's not forget down the principal. So that's another 100, 150 for the high school principal because we don't have in the budget. So already had a change of two and a half million before we go to anything else at this point. Two and a half million on 66. Randy with the calculator.
Oh, 68 and a half. Um, the increase is the new budget funding. Yes.
It's 3.8%. Okay? Because the towns are 60% of that. Divide that by 0.6, please.
I'm sorry, uh, 3.8% here.
3.8% increase. 60, 60% of it's on the town. Okay, which means their increase is. In order for them to.
Yeah, I know. Um, sorry, I'm looking at, it's 2.28 for the whole budget. Uh,
See other direction.
Just over 10.
Yes.
Three. That's what it, that's what it's projecting right now. Yeah. We haven't pulled all the department requests yet, but just as a a simple few things that we're looking at to. You know, 633. 60%. He's not perfect now.
So difference here. So do I go backwards?
That's correct. I mean, you're kind of, you're there in concept, Will.
No, delta of 4 and a half percent. Right? They said they could do three, which when it calculates to our budget is 1.8. Or it's 3.8, so it really influences the town of 26. 4.3, 4 and a half percent off.
Percent, yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna ask for an override.
I think you're slightly up on that. It's, uh, to the town's to go 3% to 6.3. The difference for the, to the town, we're going to see 3.3%. The 1.8, our budget is going up 2% from what it can for the 3%. I think you got those numbers crossed. 6.33
Yeah.
is to the 3%. And so the town, towns will see 6.3. For the budget, full budget.
Full budget. There's 60%.
Right, so 3% of the town going up compared to 6.3%. So it's 3.3% the towns are going to see above what they, um, they're asking.
Right, but you're saying the same thing. It's just you're adding that 3 until the 3. 3.3 onto the 3, which is, right?
The 4.5% should be 3.3. Sorry.
Any town when it comes down to the numbers, it's different.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, but if we're going to ask for something, obviously, we'll figure out, we'll figure out the dollar on this piece of it. So that's where we're at. Okay? So, sort of first option, you know, asking for something in that direction just based on this group of changes, nothing else. Okay? So in order to try to resolve this, right, what's the next step? Right? So, yeah, option B. Times that. If we say that the average cost of a teacher is 80, 85 plus benefits, it's called close to 100 is spent, you know, under curve, 25. In that direction, don't know, obviously, you know, when it comes to the individual personnel side and stuff. Not clearly, not going to discuss that here. That's like executive session. Most of the scenario. Okay? But if we cut 25 teachers, we're talking huge increase in class size. Right? Maybe some missing programs. Other things there. Okay? Obviously, some of the stuff that we were going through this with last year. You know, just talking about cutting some of those programs, we had, you know, people that said, I'm going to go to private schools, I'm going to go to that, there's a drop of enrollment. That drop of enrollment obviously causes more problems for us each time we go. All right? Next one is cutting buildings. And, you know, we talked about some of that piece of it, you know, what some of it cost us last year for it. But I think we're talking not just one, we're talking multiple. The reason to talk about this now and to discuss this now is we have to talk about the appetite for this piece. Because if we're going to go this direction and do this, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and figured out the structure and the changes here. Plus, you know, we want to walk on capital, capital will get more money from the state, try to raise their numbers. I think that's a math problem we're sitting at.
I, I think there's a lot of other options that are out there, not necessarily one magic bolt that's going to hit 2.5 million dollars or anything that we need. Um, I think there's a lot of areas that the school district can take a look at, and I think there's a lot of areas the school committee can sit here. Um, I think there's a lot of areas that the school district can take a look at, and I think there's a lot of areas the school committee can sit here and make choices on. Um, I think cutting buildings gotta be on the table. Uh, I'm not gonna take it off the table right now, but, um, we need to take a look at all of the ramifications of what cutting buildings means to the capacity of the district to grow in the future. Whether we wanna bring in more special education programs to help our special education budget and/or create a revenue source, uh, if we have another, um, small surge, we've had bubbles go through here before. Um, what it means if we close a building, will we ever be able to open it again? So there's a huge conversation to be had other than are we for or against cutting buildings? There's so much information that we don't have, I think it needs to be a conversation, but it needs to be a full conversation. I think other areas that we can try and take a look at is can we bring in some special education programs? Um, it's been brought up to my attention, I don't know how big it is in the district, it's a dyslexia program. I know, I have a friend in another state said that's an easy program. Uh, again, don't know the circumstances in the district, but is there anything that low hanging fruit that we can bring some kids back into the district with a program? Are our numbers high enough to make it work well to save the transportation costs and the tuition costs to offset what the program will cost here? I think we can take a look at our one-on-one, um, technology. We spend a lot of money to have a Chromebook for every single student. Um, maybe it's time to just consider, uh, bring your own devices. There's a lot of students, I know a lot of kids came through here, especially at the high school. They were begging to bring in their own computers and not use the Chromebooks. So why should we, you know, maybe if we look at that and we can, um, have a smaller fleet of Chromebooks and decrease some of our budget that way. Um, I think we can take a look at, uh, any grants that we have to have matching money for, are those programs pros and cons? Are they worthwhile versus a teacher versus a building? Um, we need to take a look at everything on the table. It's been forever, um, actually, it's like, it's never been that the school committee has, uh, taken a look at programs and what we, what each program costs other than the big things like, um, athletics. But what about other programs in the district? I'm sure the administration has looked at it over the years, but with what kind of an eye? If we're looking at this from a cost perspective and what we have to cut, we might decide to cut something that, you know, ordinarily we wouldn't. Um, I think all of that needs to be on the table as well.
Why weren't these things on the table last year when we used all the E and D?
Um, frankly, because, uh, I will tell you that it's just never, never been anything that's been coming up, um, on the radar. We've usually, um, 10 years ago or 12 years ago, when we had the override, that kinda solved the problem that we didn't need to do this. Last year it kinda came up and I've been trying to think of different ways to do it. And I apologize, I wasn't fast enough. Um, but these are ideas that have come this year because, you know what, using our E and D last year, um, I even said it, that that was a stopgap. It was not a solution. It was something that if we didn't get the override that we were gonna do so we didn't have to cut the teachers and that we were gonna try and think of more ways uh, to help our budget or get more money. And that's what I'm doing here. But also an override is on the table as well because we need money. It's just a matter of we have, and everyone faces, the towns face it too. Is there are costs that are beyond our, our ability to control, like health insurance and other costs that go up by more than 1.8% for what the towns can see from our budget because the state's not kicking in. There's only so much that we can cut and still have a top rate educational program. So these are some of the ideas that I have come up with this year to start looking at. Um, and override needs to be on there. We need to thoroughly investigate, uh, what cutting buildings would do and what the benefits and the, uh, detriments are for that. And we need to take a look at all these other areas in our budget as well.
Yeah, I did that last year in more detail, Randy, I'd be happy to talk with you. I know we have that third party study as well, so I know that was all discussed.
Uh, no, we have not discussed buildings. We discussed the condition of the building and what some of these savings would be. We did not discuss it all. Does anybody know about how to reopen a school building? What we need to do, can we, if we ever
Why would we reopen that building or either of those buildings?
Because we may need space in the future? We may need to have a need for it in the future?
There's other better ways to get space than reopening a building.
Oh, you wanna build again? That's gonna be even more expensive than keeping
Depending on the amount, if it's just one bubble, there's, there's trailers, there's, there's lots of other less expensive options.
But there's other, but there's other things than just
Okay, let's go through the one in time. Let's start with
Let's have, let's, let's do this in a very calm way and systematic. I don't have all the information here at my fingertips and it's just gonna be, uh, back and forth, back and forth without. Let's sit down, let's get this organized, have a list for pros, a list for cons, get the administration's opinions where they have to put us thought into it. Get information as far as, uh, what cutting buildings, uh, can really do. And then we can discuss when we have facts in front of us.
If we need to cut buildings, when do we need to know by?
Sooner than later, probably. So we need to have this conversation starting, but tonight's not the night because we don't have information here. I'd say let's have it on the table and let's get some, uh, maybe a subcommittee together or a couple of people that wanna work on this and get information for the full committee to discuss.
I think this should be the full committee, I think this is extremely important, I think we should all be here.
Okay. That's fine.
And as far as ideas, like I saw Ariman with some ideas, I'm not sure how any of those get us close to 2.5 million. And I don't think any of the towns have any appetite for override. With that being said, I know the Ashby building needs a lot of work still. Is there gonna be a secondary override in Ashby for that? Like, I don't, I don't understand, like
Right now that building is working, they have spent money, it is functional. Um, and it's not a safety hazard and, um, there's no reason that it needs to be shut down.
It's down to one boiler, if that goes
No, that's been replaced or being replaced.
It is being replaced.
Yes, it, it, the money is there, they have a, uh, I don't know, we contract it or, um, it's, oh, it's, yes. Okay, so they have two boilers.
Currently one. Currently one.
Ask us next month.
Yes.
But if we're considering closing the building.
Order please. All right, Randy, or June, I mean, and then Uh, yes, I just to call for order because typically we don't have meetings with people shouting back and forth, I mean, Randy had the floor. Um, but I guess since you called on me, I will say that Randy has a lot of good ideas here that should be looked at. Um, we jumped right to extremes, we, there's no information in the packet or the agenda to even truly have a discussion about this yet. Um, and in fact, although Patrick seems to have mentioned the building, we're, buildings plural was mentioned. Um, and I'm wondering what that is about? Because there's no information for us to even start talking about this yet. Like, what buildings?
Don't know. The question is, do we give administration the direction to look at, you know, making changes in that direction?
Okay, well, I would think that would be a very last
Understood, but
I would much rather go back to the towns first and, and really hear from the towns. I mean, I, this is something that we wanna look into, I think we need to
Part of the finance report, we've had multiple meetings with the town administrators, they're telling us what their appetite is for the year.
Right.
And I tell you, there's a huge gap between these pieces already.
Correct, so what, 1.3 million, is that it, the 2.5 minus the 1.2?
Change, yes, so
So 1.3 million is what we're looking to make up right now. And you said that would be about 25 teachers essentially.
Two and a half million dollars.
Yeah, it's, uh, so that's actually even more than what we would
I mean, just doing round numbers because we don't have finance stock yet. Right, we're just getting
Right, but it's not a hard cut and dry, either we do an override, we fire 25 teachers or we close multiple buildings, like this is not, I mean, there's so many other things that need to be looked at, first of all. And I think until we start diving a little bit deeper into some of our options, we don't jump right to extreme.
Just to clarify, that, that 2.5, uh, does not have any of the collective bargaining agreements in it as of yet. It also does not have transportation increases and all of those are built-in increases.
And that, that 2.5 is the total number though, that's not
That's just
This is just where we're at, right?
Right, no, no, I just mean the overall budget, it's not like the 60% town share or whatever.
Right, right now, just with those items, our budget is 2.5 million dollars over where we are right now in FY25.
Right, which the town would pay about 60% of, which would be about 60% of that 2.5. Possibly
The assessment would be 60.
The other class that we haven't talked about.
But the assessment, instead of it being the 3% that they requested, it's, it's actually right now it's 6.3 without, without those other items added in yet.
Um, on the Zoom 212 meeting problem that we're on, it did say, they all, I forget the person's name who said it, but they did say that it's really not good for a regional district to close a, a school or her town not to have a school in it.
So, yeah, it was in the presentation, but Julie Kelly and, um, everybody, everybody should have received an idea of that.
Yeah. And that, that Zoom call, I believe it was recorded, so if anybody wants to go on, was not, we watch it.
I know that we need to investigate these things, um, and Randy does bring up great points unto what we have to look at. But we do have to give the superintendent a direction on how to go about this and we have to act quickly. Cause what we, we can't come to April and not have a decision on things because we ended up there last year with overrides. And they took us until the beginning of this year to get solved. Um, I do know from the towns, cause I've talked to town leadership, they are not in a, they do not want overrides. They're not in the, in the mood, the townspeople are not in the mood. I mean, every town meeting that it went to, there were several disgruntled citizens that had said, no more to the schools. And I know that that's not correct. Um, but we need to really listen to our citizens and figure out the next action plans for these. And I know that our towns do not wanna lose a school, I know that. But we do have a lot of real estate in our district and we do need to figure out a plan going forward. Um, our schools are gonna need repairs going down the future. We know that Hawthorne Brook needs repairs. We know that our high school already needs repairs and it's a newer building. So we do need a plan for the future too. And I know that these discussions are tough. And I know that they'll get emotional, but we need to keep warm amongst ourselves because how are we going to stand up, stand with the citizens to what they decide? But we need to really give Superintendent Morgan and his team what direction this committee wants him to go. So, that being said
But it's very hard to do that without any information.
And I agree, but we need to act quickly to get the information. So the things that you've outlined, Randy. I don't even know where to begin, but we need direction probably before the beginning of the year for Brad to go, probably by even December 1st. Because doing any of these is gonna require a lot of time. And we're gonna have to get the support for them too. So anyone have any proposals on how to go forward?
I'm happy to put in some extra work, unfortunately I do need, uh, administration's time, um, because I just don't have a lot of the answers and things, but, uh, put some numbers to some of the ideas that I had to look into, um, and see where, what um, ballpark some of these cuts could possibly make or these trade-offs could possibly make. Um, I think it would be good for somebody to put together, um, like pros and cons, um, at least for staff cuts, for building cuts, for program cuts. Um, so we can take a look and see what the trade-offs are, um, for different decisions that we make.
Anyone else? Which, um, June? I, I think at this point we do just need any more information, I mean, as far as looking into any of those, we need to know what are we looking at? Are we looking at multiple buildings closing? Because that's what was mentioned. And if so, what are those buildings? I would like to have that in front of me and say, these are the buildings that we would look at closing, these are the buildings we would not look at closing. You know, something like that to even start this conversation. I don't like the idea of flying blind and say, yes, please pursue any of these without having any clue what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of details that still need to come, but without saying we're willing to take this step and go that direction. You know, because it doesn't make sense to spend a whole lot of time, you know, all the time it takes to go figure option C out, yes.
I mean, what, what are the potentials for option C? I mean, any, any, any information I'm saying, I, I, I would not want us to give any directive to pursue something that we don't know what we're talking, we don't know what is being pursued. I mean, you know, what are we talking about closing here? And, and if you don't have an answer yet, then we don't have enough information to give directive to
I mean, how, we can't get all that deep into it.
No, we can't, we could, we have seven buildings.
Yeah.
Buildings is plural, I know Patrick likes to bring up AES a lot. What other buildings are we talking about closing? If nobody can say that to me, I'm not gonna, we give a blessing or a directive to pursue it.
We're just saying, are we willing to go down the path of looking at that or are we taking that off the table and starting?
I think we should take that off the table to start with while we pursue any of these many other options that should be looked into. And if we exhaust all of our other options, then perhaps we start looking at one.
Okay. My concern is we had a lot of discussion about some of the user-friendly pieces of it. None of them came anywhere close to two and a half. So we have to think, figure that out. May I say something?
Yes.
I, I did just want to add that, you know, if, if an override is something that, that we're going to ask the towns to consider, it, it cannot be an unmade town meeting with a June ballot vote. We can't wait that long, it would have to be a special town meeting and a special ballot vote so that we're able to plan. Because even, again, option C, option B, any combination of the two, you're looking at potentially months of planning. So we can't, and so an override though would have to be something, it can't, it can't be like last year because there wouldn't be enough time for us to open school.
Just a thought, um, throwing it out there. What about moving, um, the kindergarten to Hawthorne and the eighth grade to the high school? Eighth, eighth grade was in the high school when I came here, so.
Those are options that, I mean, if we give Mr. Morgan and his team the direction to go, they can look at consolidation and movement of some of the class rooms around, or the classes, like bringing eighth grade and
Something sad, you know, I mean.
But kindergarten
Kindergarten could go to Hawthorne.
You mean pre-k? You mean pre-k?
Yeah, pre-k, I'm sorry, yeah, pre-k, thank you, we only pre-k go to Hawthorne.
I don't know whether Hawthorne is equipped, that's why we would have to give the direction.
Yeah, that's why I'm just kinda, I don't, I don't know that.
But then, like, the Swan cook is central office, we have central office, but we'd have to relocate central office if we're looking at closing the Swan. If we're looking at possibly closing Hawthorne Brook, we have to figure out where to put those students. If we bring eighth grade here, do we send the students to Nissitisit? If we look at any of our elementary schools, where do those students go to be housed? Those are the directions that Superintendent Morgan needs. And besides looking at these, other things that Randy has put on the table.
Right.
Which is all going to take time to figure Which is all going to take time to figure out. And several meetings.
I mean, clearly a building closer would require a lot of research and a lot of effort. So again, I don't want to give that directive to pursue any of that, if you, if you're looking at multiple options, because that's a, a lot of time and a lot of work that we may not want to pursue once we, you know, look at these other options. So I think if that's something that people seriously want to look at, we need to have a little bit more direction and say, if we move the schools to this, this, and this, you know, or this, this, and this, those are the things I want to pursue. Not let's just look at all of our buildings and, you know, you know what I mean? I would, I would, I would like more details before we say waste admin's time if they're pursuing a direction that we don't want to go. So let's get some more details on that piece. And in the meantime, I think we need to take a serious look at a lot of these other options about bringing some more special, special education programs back.
One of the issues with bringing special education back is that I know that there's specialized training for all of these, and it's going to bring on more money to our special ed costs for these specialized training teachers. Is that something that?
And we take that's something we need to know how many students. If we have yay amount of students that being sent out a district for a certain program, then that's probably a program that we want to find out. What would the cost be to bring it in? And bring those students down.
Because if we can bring, if we have enough students to support a teacher, then we save on the transportation costs and that pays for the program. And it gives us lots of savings. That's the whole reason for bringing in special education programs. But it all depends on what our population is going to.
Just a completely random idea that I just thought of right now. The way that we combine something as simple as PD with another district like Lunenburg, is there opportunity to find out what neighboring schools have for resources like that too, and potentially combine programs?
We have reached out to Groton and Dunspore. They have no interest in consolidating some of our services with us.
Okay, well, perhaps we're, and we have a relationship with.
They are not interested as well. As consolidating some of like our central office and things like that.
Well, I, I'm thinking more special ed, special services. If they have, you know, certain teachers and staff that, you know, are more qualified in certain areas that could somehow be shared for something. Just an idea.
It looks like a, almost like a tuition. Our own collaborative, almost like, yeah. We have, you know, program A and because a couple of districts around us don't have enough students, bring it here. And then a different program, if whoever has the more students, but not enough to program, if we have enough, we send them there.
I do think that, I think one of the things that we have to be careful of is, I mean, bringing the students back into the district is, is always a good thing, but something that we could run into is that if we bring back a percentage of students that are considered inclusion students, we could start to eclipse the fifty percent barrier in classrooms, which can be a problem if you have students. If you have a classroom, like over half of the kids are on A, that can sometimes be problematic. It is not something that is recommended. I don't know that Dr. Reese, do you have anything you want to add on to that, but that could be something where our numbers are high right now. And in some cases, we are, I would guess we're close to, close to that number. We do have cautious not to go over that fifty percent threshold of inclusion center.
What happens at the, after fifty percent threshold?
I, I would have to talk, I would have to talk to Jesse. It, it is not something that is it's not something that is recommended in that.
Go ahead, Jim. So at this point, I mean, there are a lot of good ideas out there. Just having this discussion, we're starting to have some more ideas, which is great. So perhaps maybe that's something we can schedule is just a way to talk out a lot of this, but even invite the public to give some input to, something like that. Just, you know, another, I don't know, more ideas essentially, and diving a little deeper.
That brings another workshop.
Yes, thank you. That's what I'm trying to say. But this workshop has to take place quickly. Right. But at least now the conversations are starting because, like I said, there was nothing in the packet about this. I asked through email a few times, what is this conversation about? So coming to the table, I have a blank slate.
Well, and, and that's fine, because I think we want the discussion to happen in a meeting and not over emails and not.
No, no, no.
You know, so I think that's why, like when Will and I had chatted, we said, let's bring everyone together. So we're together and see each other and can have this conversation and get it started, just getting it started.
Right. We're not saying I'm going to go home and go to bed and think of something right before I'm falling asleep and something three days from now. And I mean, Randy had a nice list prepared from, I'm sure, finance subcommittee meetings, but I think, you know, to, to really have a good conversation, we need to know that this is the conversation we're going to have before we got, so.
And so that's why this is the start of a conversation, but we need to act quickly. That's because we can't take all of the superintendent's time or Nancy's time going down a rabbit hole that we're never gonna
Right.
do. So. Given that, anyone have a proposal on what they want to do?
I recommend we give the superintendent administration direction on showing us options B and C items other than override.
Options B is cut, cut staff.
Yep.
And option C is buildings and perhaps staff too, because you may not get the number we need because we have contractual obligations. Does everyone, and look into, because that would be looking into these programs as well. And then.
So a point of clarification, when you say administration to show us, do you mean the, the point that I was asking, like this is, you know, potential to close this school or this school or potential to move students here and there without actually pursuing any of the information yet so that we, so that we can give admin an indication of which direction we would want to go once we hear this.
Once you hear the full packet.
We're just asking them to do a feasibility study essentially.
No, I think so. We wouldn't, no, because that would involve probably a lot more work than, than again, if we don't want to send admin doing a bunch of stuff that we don't, might not want to pursue at all. So I think we need to hear what buildings and what, say, redistricting students around options there are before we determine if we want to actually do a feasibility study on any of them.
Why, why would we? Why would we make that option and not leave it up to Brad and his team who understand the buildings, who understand what we can and can't close and why we can and can't close it? Why would we not leave everything for them on the table to decide what could and could be not?
Because of what the school committee does, we give them a direction.
And the direction would be to look into closing.
Not everything willy nilly, no. It's looking into specific of one building or another. We're not going to have Brad take all his time looking at a whole bunch of different scenarios that we might not want to entertain. I'm fine with him showing us some options, but doing a feasibility study or exploring these other avenues any deeper without going through the school committee doesn't make them sense.
But how would he show you options without looking into the feasibility?
He would say, option one is close Ashby Elementary and move students here. Option two is close Nissetisit and move students here. Option three is close this school and that school and students here. He would tell us what the different options might be that admin wants to look at. And then we would say, oh, let's look at this one, but not these ones.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I don't think we are.
It, it depends on what you're talking about, what level of information we're asking to come back this first time.
And it's not the most basic, often some very simplest information without a feasibility study or taking up very much time.
There's also three numbers to mark that.
Exactly.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
There's also three numbers not here to mark that.
So first we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Right, the clarification though was what does show us mean? I mean, what, perhaps Superintendent Morgan, what, what do you envision showing us?
Are you asking me to come back with potential recommendations for buildings and great configurations in those buildings?
And cutting staff, I guess, if that would be the other option. If you were just going to show us a layout of like, these are the potential options.
Or, or these are ones that we'd like to go down and look at on whether it's actually fully feasible.
Yes, I mean, the, the staff I, I've already pretty much looked at and I can, I can share that if, if we reduce fifteen staff, that gets us to about one point four in class sizes of twenty nine to thirty four. If we go to twenty, if we go to the two point five mark, we're going to be close to forty in our, in our classrooms. Which is.
Right, I mean.
But again, the, the way to cut this money isn't all cut staff. It's not all cut buildings. It's not all cut.
No, but it could be a combination of it.
Right.
So what we're asking for is, you're asking us to give you a direction on what to look at so that you can go down the hard road of doing the full feasibility on how things would work.
Yes.
Yeah, we're asking for one step before that. So your gut right now is, I would like to explore these things because I think this option might be the best. That we might kind of have a good outcome if we go down there, and this is another possibility between cuts, buildings and programs or other things. So that we can sit here and weigh the pros and the cons of those avenues and then give you the permission to go down the, the, the extensive look at and energy of figuring out how it would work.
So I'm going to compose this. For me, overlooking seeing what buildings we could cut or look at potentially so that we can give Superintendent Morgan a better view of what we may think of. Is that we know that we have two buildings in Townsend of Squanacook and Hawthorne Brook. We know that Hawthorne Brook is going to need extensive repairs. And we know that Squanacook is not fully used. Would we want to send Brad down the direction of looking at Squanacook and Hawthorne Brook and taking one of those offline? And the other option is also add Ashby in to counterbalance the others, because we know that Ashby still needs work, even though they have progressed in work. But we know that Ashby probably is not going to go for another override as well.
I mean, Ashby is safe and functional and any of the immediate things that were talked about a couple of years ago have already been addressed by the town. But, sorry, I just lost my.
I am.
It's okay.
But do we want to look at Ashby in a consolidation point of view to get more of our kids together so everyone's consolidated? Kind of thing. That's where my approach is, is that we can balance out our special ed programs across the district where we don't have to keep everything at Barn and Brook. Because right now they have all of the special programs. And so, and it's taking a strain on that school. Whereas if we could spread out maybe some of those programs, we wouldn't have as much of a strain, but we'd have to see what we can do with.
Again, I, I'd just really like to see what the actual options might be before any of it is, you know, I don't want to send him down a rabbit hole that nobody wants to pursue. So.
I'd like to see it on paper of a couple of different layouts and some reasoning to pros and cons, just high level pros and cons of what it means.
So again, we have a motion on the floor. Do we want to take a vote on this motion for? And I think it was having superintendent look at a bunch of staff and the possible cuts of buildings with a proposal behind it of what buildings and the reconfiguration and consolidation or whatever name you want to put around this.
So just showing us potential options without wasting his time doing a feasibility study or anything like that.
Not getting into the, like bussing routes. We're not going to like
Right.
Schedule bussing routes right now.
And potentially a variety of options so we can try to start to narrow it down.
Yes.
And also the other options that Randy mentioned.
Yes. Are we ready for a vote?
I am ready.
All of us in favor?
I am.
Anybody opposed? Any abstention? Great. Now that a workshop was proposed, we can have a workshop with the committee. When is everybody scheduled? To an open date?
What about Thursday, November seventh? Next week, we have how many? Our next Tuesday night?
I am waiting until twelve.
And then we have a meeting on the fourteenth.
Can I make this a comment? It just, this is, there's a lot of night events right now, especially here at the high school. And we do have various subcommittee meetings as well. I, I would suggest if at all possible, just having a school committee meeting and the workshop be for the school committee meeting.
Okay, on the fourteenth?
Yes, just because the, 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 the night events at this point in time at the high school are almost every night.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you guys okay with an early meeting? What time do you want to start that? And that's where the information can be revealed.
And maybe, maybe share ideas with, just bounce ideas off maybe a finance committee meeting in advance? I don't know.
And hopefully, I mean, with that being three weeks out, hopefully we can get, fill in some of these numbers that Randy was asking about.
So on the fourteenth, you guys want to schedule a workshop? What time do you want that to start? Our meeting's at six.
We could try five. I don't know if everyone can make it.
Would that be enough time or do you want four?
I think four makes it hard for people to get there.
Are you saying you want to do this right before the school committee?
Yeah.
How does that give us time to go over everything and then actually be ready to vote on things?
Well, we'll discuss some in finance. And then.
I, maybe, maybe suggest that the meeting be at seven and the workshop be at five. So we can make the meeting a little later. And then we can make the workshop a little later as well, and maybe have two hours to an hour and a half.
To figure out.
To go over some options. I mean, obviously, time is of the essence, but we are going to need time
To gather some information.
To gather the information.
Right. I, I guess. Right. Um, I, I guess, uh, to Patrick's point of, um, discussing all this and then going to a meeting to vote on it, doesn't really give people a lot of time to digest all the information, as well as we were talking about the workshop being more for generating ideas. Um, which obviously, if we generate more ideas on where we can make compromises, then we're not gonna have any details, um, in feasibility and numbers.
Like, sorry. Hold on a minute. December twelfth.
And we can always go, I don't, I don't know, people's availability on the weekend, on the Saturday morning or something like that, uh, just to kinda sit down and do a brainstorm.
Make myself available for anything. I think sooner than later, Nate, go through Randy's email and go through every point and have, figure out if there's anything there that is an actual cut that can increase money. Because I think even on top of B and C, I'm looking at three million. I mean, Randy has some good ideas in there. Do I think it's three million? No, but every good idea that she has might save a teacher. So, absolutely.
Brad, how long to gather your information on some of these?
And, and again, to brainstorm some new ideas, we don't need to have, Brad, Brad doesn't need to have his fun part together.
I, I would say a, a week anyway.
Can you do your workshop on the fourth day, please? The fourth is a Monday, or, you know, or, or something there?
I, I, right now, there's nothing scheduled here at high school on the fourth, so I, I could do that.
Throw on a date out.
Do you wanna do a workshop on the fourth?
We could do that.
Instead, does everyone, the Mondays seem to, Mondays might, is this an in-person workshop?
We can do in-person, we can, I mean, it's a workshop, we can zoom in, uh, Will, if he wants to join.
Yeah. Oh, are you allowed to have that a whole week?
Yeah.
Would you be able to join something by yourself?
If you think, and I, again, I'd have to check with Nick unless someone knows the answer, I do think we should try to do the executive session, I mean, to do an executive session where people could potentially be identified just by talking about reductions.
So a closed workshop and executive session? Does that?
I wouldn't want someone, just because if we start talking about positions, people know where they are. I listen to your list.
Is the workshop more for just brainstorming new ideas, though? They're not necessarily identifying specific?
Some of the new ideas may come out of information that we've given. There's.
I'm looking at staffing reductions. And talking about potential staffing reductions. I wouldn't want someone to be able to identify who they are.
Right, I understand, but, um, but our workshop isn't where you're presenting various options to us. It's where we're trying to come up with more places to find money.
Potentially, some of the suggestions that Randy wanted us to look at, we're looking at programs.
Okay.
And so when you're looking at those programs, that might be, where it gets a little touchy.
And it's not that we're trying not to be transparent.
No, I agree.
But we do need to protect the people that we have.
Right. I just wanna differentiate between the brainstorming workshop, where we're just kinda bouncing on ideas and, you know, other things that we can look at, compared to, like, what options are we exploring further as far as the, the bigger potatoes? So. Is there a time that's better for you, Will, or, or that week? So then?
Are you, yeah. I mean, Wednesday, yeah, I mean, Wednesday's better for me than six, than certainly one day or Tuesday. Wednesday's the only day I can't do.
Excellent.
I mean, I, I could do five o'clock, uh, so I guess I could do it. Well, five, five-thirty in that timeframe. Yeah.
On Wednesday?
Six. Yeah, we could do five-thirty, that'd be great.
Five-thirty on Wednesday? For all. And that will be a closed executive session workshop for the school committee?
And it's in person?
Yeah, in person.
And then your follow-up meeting will be a regular scheduled time at six P M on the following.
And we necessarily do not have to have it in the L G I room. We could pick a different room.
Well, we could always do it at the central office, if that's easier. We do have, um, the P D room in central office.
What would work easier?
Or. Or.
I'll be in front of a remote as well.
Okay.
But then you can have a closer room. We'll figure a room out.
Five-thirty on the sixth?
Five-thirty. Was that the sixth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Five-thirty. All right. Are we done with the budget discussion? And now onto policy. Randy?
Um, policy. Um, so there's a number of the ones here for adoption. I am pulling J I C student discipline. We had a comment from a community member, um, that we discussed in our last policy subcommittee meeting, and we're gonna make some small changes to that policy. Um, so I'm gonna read them all together. If anybody wants any of these pulled out for any particular reason, I don't know. But I'm gonna make a motion that the school committee approve for adoption. Policy D J A dash one, regional school district purchasing authority. D J E dash one, regional school district procurement of requirements. I H B A programs for students with disabilities. I H B D compensatory education. I H B E A, English language learners. I H B F homebound schooling. I H B G homeschooling. I H B E, sorry, I H B H E, remote learning. I H C A, summer school.
Second. Great. All of those in paper? Anybody opposed? Any abstentions?
I understand. I didn't do my whole work.
So, okay. And then we have just a couple for, um, for a first reading, uh, the J I C all the way through the E H B we're pulling. We, we did not get through those in our last meeting. Um, so I move that the school committee approved policy, um, I I V class size, I J instructional materials, and I J L library materials selection and adoption uh, for a first reading.
Second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on, um, Mr. McPhillips with the warrant committee, any report?
Warrants come in, I review the warrants, I sign the warrants.
Um, negotiations and personnel, teachers? I have no updates at this time. Randy, any negotiations of non-teachers? Community outreach and town liaisons? Anything with Ashby? Anything with Pepper? No. Anything with Townsend?
Uh, we do have another, uh, somebody who, just call it administrator, county administrators and.
And then we are on to other business, any other business? And it is eight-thirty right now. You timed this out really well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have one quick thing. Um, it doesn't necessarily require a vote, but I had meant to bring it up at the last meeting, and I apologize. Um, there is an ongoing wellness committee that Catherine Hampson, um, has, has started last year and with the center of wellness policy and making sure that we are looking at the district on implementing everything in the wellness policy and improving, uh, wellness in the district. Um, it's a committee that has a cross-section of, um, I think there's a community member, there's, uh, obviously nurses, there's, um, help, um, health or gym, uh, teachers, there's other teachers in the district. I'm, I was on it last year, but right now, I just went to the meeting that was today, but wanted to open it up. If anybody else wanted to be on this committee, you know, please speak up, uh, I'd be happy to give up the spot for somebody new if they would like to. If not, then I'm happy to serve. I'll take that out, I'm happy to serve. But I wanted to bring it up and, and just make sure.
All right. I will take a motion to adjourn.
We still.
As well. Do we, do we, is it okay if we allow Chuck to talk? Is everyone okay with that? He's a representative from Pepperell. Chuck, you have the folks.
Uh, first of all, I appreciate everyone's on the committee's dedication and the, the stuff that you're doing. Talking about the budgets and possibility and cause. This man, again, it's not funding. When the P A's and group got together with the leadership of the citizens, and called with breathing attack, that wasn't because we didn't wanna do more, it's because they're not willing to do it. I have to ask you guys, for what? Two on the floor, it says G A three percent and sixty percent and forty percent state and zero increase. The state had money. They just owe that very hard. And I think we need to make that loud and clear to all of our constituents, I certainly am making that clear. It is not, we are trying to reduce costs. We both have a revenue problem. I can speak for Pepperell and in other towns. We're constrained to two and a half percent. As both in Cleveland. You guys are constrained by the funding from the state. And unfortunately, the state has chosen not to fund local aging municipalities and has chosen not to fund schools. And I, and I think as you go through this preparation, we have to keep that in mind. And as you're talking to constituents, we gotta let them know, we are doing everything possible. I don't think Brad has that budget. I don't think that there's thousands of people sitting up here that we don't need in our building. It's a, it's an important task that this high school drives for our students. And I really wholeheartedly thank you guys for your efforts. But we are missing that very regular school. You guys are doing what you're really doing, I believe, towns are doing what they should be doing, the state right now is doing. I just wanted to thank everybody who's been playing by.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, now, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Will, who seconded?
I will.
Okay, Patrick. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? No, thank you. Thank you, everyone.